So we'll call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance is on our agenda tonight. So from where you are, in whatever location you're in, or whatever state you're in, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation,
One nation under God, under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Right.
There really has to be a better way. It's always tough electronically.
Well, we made the effort. That's what counts.
We made the effort, right.
So maybe in the future, Mark, when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, everybody else just stands or puts their hand over their heart and let whoever's chair in the meeting recite it.
We could do that.
Good idea.
We could do that. Um. We'll play a tape of kids doing it. That'd be the best. So we'll open up the budget reviews, the big one, the confusing one, the one that's all encompassing and takes over several departments, most included, uh, our first responders, is of course the IT budget. You remember IT last year is something we, um, we created a budget last year. We started taking the budget, the IT crumbs from all around the town, and they're big crumbs, and we started putting them together for, to start formulating an IT department. We were woefully, and we still are woefully behind typical municipalities when it comes to the support of our IT, having professionals on staff, et cetera. So Joe, are you prepared to run through this?
Yes. Yeah, I'm giving the presentation on this.
Okay.
And certainly, um, whether it's, um, Chief Finkelstein, or any of the fire departments, or anyone else that's on the call, if they want to join in at some point, going through this, because obviously they're part of this. But I was gonna give, um, you know, a run over what's in here, and then making sure Slutman have any questions. So last year, we did a PowerPoint presentation. We kind of were, you know, trend-setting as far as trying to evolve this budget, as Mark said, by bringing different IT lines from the police budget. And the planning budget has some GIS and trying to, putting it all in the same place. It makes it a lot more centralized, easier, better comparable for other towns, so it's a little more transparent to the public. So with that being said, um, at the time, we were talking about, uh, I remember even the words that called a bridge year, which is this current year, where we were ramping up a little bit, ramping up some hours for STAR contract. STAR, STAR is a vendor from the town of East Lime, the owner, Dave Lewis, graduate from East Lime, very knowledgeable. His staff has been very good with emergency services, as far as I'm understanding, and with, uh, with the town of allowing us to get by with actually having one IT person on staff on the town side. So that, um, the other thing, uh, just this year, and it kind of plays into this contract, into this budget, is that one of the things that was really, the emergency services we're looking for is 24/7, um, 24/7 coverage, 3:00 in the morning on a Saturday night. Um, dispatch goes down, they need, they need someone to respond. So that was set up this year, just like we talked about. We set up an IT steering committee, and, um, we're trying to go with that. So with that being said, it kind of lays a framework for this budget. But no PowerPoint this year, and I spare you, and so we can get everyone out of here. There's a lot of stuff to conduct. However, um, what I'm promoting is another bridge year, because, and, and, and this is the reason, is that everything seems to be going decent this year. The structure of how everything's set up, where the director of public works is the, um, one that kind of oversees the budget, and, and then we have the emergency services. We're trying to make it work as best as possible. But, um, you know, basically even from the IT steering committee, it's not the perfect scenario how it's set up, but, um, I think having another bridge year, especially in light of, um, the emergency services moving, uh, police dispatch, uh, fire marshal moving into the new public safety building this coming year. There's a lot unknowns of getting our arms around everything and what that's gonna involve. So the best thing to do is try to ride it with another bridge year of having, continue having STAR contracts, um, making sure all the stuff's centralizing, having, having me coordinate, working with the chief, uh, Finkelstein, and, and anyone else in emergency services, trying to lead this IT steering committee, so that we can kind of come to you next year in the 22, 23, and maybe, maybe have a different direction as where this thing's going. So with that being said, um, in, in the budget, um, and I have the budget sheet in front of me. I'm just gonna kind of go over some, highlight the line items and what's here, um, and then if you have any questions. Um, we still have only one IT person actually on staff, Carmen Ames, um, listed as IT database supervisor. Um, and then you get into, um, and that's why we have to have the service contract, uh, because having one person, she really mans the town hall, community center. Um, she does, she can help out with the PD, but that's where STAR contract comes in. Of all the things that maybe Carmen needs support with, there's tons of things that need to be done, um, in working in conjunction with, um, with Carmen. Um, but especially with, um, any of the stuff for the, for the emergency services. When you get into, uh, the line, the line items, 200, the 200 lineups, um, I did add about $1,500, uh, when they're, we're, we're not exactly sure. We're assuming, uh, two new coppers. Um, there's the stuff that the police have or antiquated as far as what's at the existing building, and to get them the proper copying machines they need in that, in that building, in the downstairs of that building. So that's what that, um, increase was. Uh, the licensing and hosting, I mean, everything is broken down. I have a very detailed, um, spreadsheet that I believe the Selectmen got that's part of the package. I'd almost rather refer to that. It's, it goes under the existing budget on light item 109, 200, 216, the licensing, hosting, support in town. It's going up $3,000, and essentially, there was a few tweaks with the website hosting and antivirus, because we've had some more laptops and things like that. But just in general, there's absolutely no wiggle room in this budget. If anything is needed, a switch here or something there. So, um, I was carrying a little bit, it's just under 3,000, just for the odds and ends things to keep, to, to maintain an IT, um, the town IT department. So that was just a nominal increase. The line 200, 217 is still broken down to the town hall's component. I mean, we pull the money of the town hall's component, which is a 22,750. There's a 10,000 amount in the PD line item, the East Line Ambulance Association ships in a share, and also, uh, we bumped up, uh, just to make sure we can cover the rest. So that's what that line item 200, 217 is, is still the same. Um, other IT services, um, there's a little bit of training, um, there's the fiber costs. Um, and then any, any of the odds and ends things has come up on a yearly basis. The, the, the GIS annual hosting, um, that's all the same. That's a pretty, we're actually starting to, um, work with Gary Geischild, to, um, try to work with the, the town, other town departments, to make sure they fully understand the, um, the, the usefulness of GIS and making sure it's set up by the user group. Because GIS is not just something you just get and pay for, and then all of a sudden it's done. GIS is used by everyone, not only the, the public, but, um, town hall staff. It's an enterprise-wide. It's not something specific to the planning department. If anyone's ever used it, it's extremely useful tool. Every town has them. It's pretty critical to fund it. Um, so now you get in the meat and the potatoes. The biggest line item, if, unfortunately, when you look at percentages, there, there's one that blows up on the far, uh, right, is 59%, and that's the police, EMD, fire marshal's IT support. But I have broken down every, every penny of how that, and so I'm still in that spreadsheet. In working with Chief Finkelstein, he, he gives me this information that I feed into this spreadsheet, which puts together the budget, um, the MDT support contract, and I'll do as best I can to, to mention these things. And if I botch it, Mike, please jump in. But, um, the, uh, the IMC and the MDT's contracts are going away, and it's going, um, and I guess the coverage for the MDT's is gonna be on the next-gen kind of contract. So instead of having a $15,200 line item for the MDT's, and, and the MDT's, just so everyone knows, is the mobile dial, data terminals, that's, that's the laptops in the, in the police cruisers. Um, so that's what that is. IMC was the, uh, reporting system that the PD had. Um, they're going to the next-gen system. That's, that, that cost was, uh, that Mike gave me was 17,880. Um, and also the 13,920 was the fiber. I believe that's the fiber. Is it the fiber cost for the new building? Okay. And then the big, the big line item on here, and, and the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Finance, when we go to them, are gonna be fully aware, is the mandate with the, uh, body cameras. And so when the town purchased the body cameras, I believe Chief Finkelstein, um, said that it was gonna come at its support costs. So, um, it, I mean, it's all detailed there. Instead of having the MDT, um, 15,000, it's got, it's now getting rolled into the, uh, the patrol cars, and the body cameras are all being covered under Panasonic and, and a support contract, but that contract jumps from, um, if you add up to 15,000, to 4,000, to 32,000. So that's, that's a big jump right there. Um, the, uh, you know, again, there's some other ones, the, uh, the policy software. You can certainly ask the chief about that, about what the increase of there is. Um, plus, that, that, I have miscellaneous items that come up, you know, you're gonna have the public safety building. You, you spend, the town's gonna spend all this money, and do you have a laser printer for this area? And, uh, um, you know, whatever the specific, uh, IT function is. So we threw in a little bit money there, just to make sure that, um, that was covered. Um, there's a lot of other specific line items that we certainly could answer questions, but the big one at the end is, is the additional support. So STAR's computer, as far as, I mean, I've been with the town about seven and a half years, and they've been essentially, um, holding an $82, it's $81.88, even this year, that's their billable rate. Um, or at least that, I should step back. That's the rate they actually charge us. They would love to be charging us more, because, um, that rate is so, I checked with other towns, and that rate is way under, but they can't continue to keep doing it for $81.88. So they're proposing a rate of $100 an hour next year. So I had to put extra money into the contract to make sure I at least retain the same amount of hours going in. Now, I've already done my due diligence, and I found another neighboring town where, I mean, they're, they're, they're getting charged anywhere from 140, 170. So, um, the, the, the $100 that, um, that STAR is asking for an increase is extremely reasonable for what they've been giving us, um, for the bunch, the, you know, the last seven years. So that's why that lineup jumped up from 50 to 72. It's not really asking for more hours of coverage. It's to, it's to cover that increase in the rate. But, um, that, and that, so that's a chunk. Um, then the bottom of the, uh, the bottom, there's just a lot of numbers in here, but it goes over exactly what we're paying for STAR's coverage. Um, it's $20,000 a year for that 24/7 ability. I mean, what that is, is STAR, STAR Computers actually pays their employees to be on-call. They can't, they have to be fit for duty, um, be able to take a call at any time. Um, they've done it this year. So that comes at a cost that STAR, um, charges us for that. And they had to increase it just a little bit this year, because he found it was very difficult this year staffing around holidays. No one wanted it, so he had to pay them more. That's the only difference of why that line item went up a little bit. And when I say that line item, it's all, it's all encapsulated in that 72,000 that, um, constitutes that line for the additional support needed for 24/7. So that, that's in a nutshell, um, what's in there. I'm sure you have questions, and, um, either the chief, um, or I hope we can answer for you.
Um, before we go to questions, any other department heads want to fill in any, any blanks or any, uh, other fine, fine points? There's a lot of detail here.
I certainly just want to add in there that, you know, as you've seen, and as we've discussed over and over for the past, uh, you know, a couple of years, the police side of the house has, has gone drastically more into the IT realm, and that has really had additional costs. And you'll see, if you look, uh, at the breakdown of this 109 budget, there are places where are we, where we are reducing costs and relieving costs, and other places where it's increasing. Uh, the consolidation into the next-gen system, which isn't not, is not just a benefit for the police, but also for fire and EMS, um, changes some of those costs, reduces some of the MDT outside, uh, cost for modems. Um, but also the body cameras significantly puts new costs on as, as well as the fiber. So, you know, certainly any questions you may have, be happy to, to address. But just to echo kind of what Joe was saying, um, we do have a void when it comes to IT. We do have, um, you know, institutionally as a town, a, a reduced amount of support. However, uh, the work with STAR has been, you know, has been good. Um, I will say this, right now, we currently have, you know, the projects going on for the body cameras, in-car cameras, uh, new records management system moved to the new building. Um, and I, and I cannot express enough of how labor-intensive it is for the IT side of the house. And each vendor that we deal with in those conversations, um, you know, to, to every single vendor, um, you know, doesn't really kind of understand our setup. So I think we're at a deficit sometimes, because they basically will call and say, hey, get your IT people to do this. And well, then we have to go out to STAR as a vendor to say, all right, we need you to contract your hours to, to figure out how to do this problem, where most municipalities they deal with have in-house support. So I think, you know, in the long term, that may be a cost issue that you want to really reconsider. Um, and again, I know it's not this year, but in the future, uh, because we have so many hours that get added on, and many of them last minute and unable to budget for, which then causes other budget constraints on the other side of the house, so.
Other question, are, are there any questions from the Board of Selectmen?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, so on the line item, uh, for the, uh, Panasonic, um, it, on the left, it says patrol and body cam, and then it says in-car camera support. So is that increase accommodating the software that's needed for the body cam system we're going to?
Uh, and, and I'm not looking, I don't have that, the 109, actually I do have here. Um, but, but no, it's fine. Um, so basically Panasonic is the current vendor that the town has utilized. That is going away. That is now moving over to Axon. Axon, um, as you remember when we had that presentation, um, the support is a little bit different, um, and, and what they're charging us, because it is accompanying the, both the body cameras, the in-car cameras, as well as the evidence.com, the cloud-based, uh, you know, storage of that. So that's gonna be that difference in what it's gonna encompass.
So eventually, uh, that, it won't be Panasonic. At some point, it'll be Ax, Axon, or whatever.
Actually, it should, it should, Joe, I'm not, I don't have, I'm gonna find the 109 in my, in my paperwork. But what do you have, Joe, for that?
Yeah, I, I have a list as Panasonic. That, that's part of the, I mean, if you want to call it a problem, it's like, I, the chief and I communicate very well, and I got the numbers right. But if the vendor is not Panasonic, then I don't really deal with it. Um, so that probably should read whatever the vendor that Mike is saying, and, and in-car camera support and body cameras, it's, it's all-inclusive. Um, I just.
Don't transition to Axon, Dan, instead of Panasonic. Panasonic will now go away once we have this install, which is scheduled to take place in May.
I don't, Dan, I don't think always, uh, the departments give like this much of a spreadsheet of every detail, but I think it was very helpful here, knowing everything that's going on in IT. So, um, I just didn't have that information of who his vendor was.
No, that's fine, and that answers my question, because I knew there was that other vendor out there, and then that's where it's gonna go. Thank you.
Great, Dan. Any other questions on this budget?
I have a question. Um, so last year, Joe, we talked about possibly the need, or we, we may have brought it up, of an IT director or additional IT staff. And at the time, we were gonna put together a subcommittee, we had one, and then kind of COVID got in the way. And then, um, and then some things changed, right? Um, for example, the, uh, the body cams turned out to be less of an IT issue because of the reason, the cloud server. So some of that stuff, we just don't necessarily need full-time support on. Um, do you still foresee, you said you're calling in a bridge year? Do you still foresee that we're going to, uh, possibly need an in-house, uh, director or, uh, additional tech staff? And if so, could that all be encompassed in one person? Or are we still gonna need, um, STAR Computer where we get, uh, multiple people with varied, um, levels of experience and qualifications?
The best way I can answer it is that we, we really need to move into the new building to understand what, uh, everything, you know, the town has gone very far in, in investing on that building and getting all the dispatch and everyone in the same spot. But I think it's too soon, and that's why we're calling for a second bridge year, to, uh, know. I think ultimately, I think you do need some kind of director-level people, that's person that's looking at 10,000-foot level of where the IT is in the town. But, you know, I think there's still some synergies with the Board of Ed, um, and they're still trying to figure it out with all their issues. And, um, you know, but the, the, uh, emergency services are very, have been very adamant. They need a boots-on-the-ground someone that's gonna fix stuff, and, and they're, they're, they need that. So that director, is that person gonna be, you know, managing this stuff? Are they gonna be hands in, in the equipment and stuff like that? And until we move into that new public safety building, we really aren't gonna know. So it's gonna be a good process over the next 15 months to feel it out. And that's why a second bridge year, um, I would be able to answer that a lot better next, next year at this time.
Okay. That does answer my question. Um, I understand the increase, uh, to 100. Um, that doesn't surprise me. I was surprised at what we were paying. Um, so I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
We are making progress on this, um, and with all that's going on in public safety, moving to the new building and all that, it's probably appropriate to just wait a year to figure out how all the dust settles and, and all that. But also, um, this, these are, this is a tough budget year, um, with, with the pandemic still going on, and business is hurting and people out of work. So we're sensitive to that as well.
The current, the current, the current setup on the hours, I mean, you have both fire chiefs on this call and the police chief. I mean, STAR is available to them at any time that they need it, and that was a big issue before. And I can say that it seems to be working, uh, you know, we could do a better job with that IT steering committee of getting all the key players together, and we have met. But, um, the, the bridge role this year is working, and I think one more year of it will work, and then we really have to figure out where we want to go with this.
Mark, just a quick, just a real, uh, comment. Looking back on where we were a year ago, we found out that we were woefully, uh, behind the power curve when it came to IT. And moving into the new building, the addition of, uh, body cams and so forth, you obviously want to have the best quality product we can have. And I think it's a testament to a work of a lot of people. We still have probably some way to go, but I think, you know, I feel a whole lot more comfortable now than I did a year ago. And I think we all assumed it would take, uh, you know, an increase in cost to do it right. And I think doing it right is more important than trying to save a few dollars. It's just, and good job to everyone that's been involved so far, and look forward to seeing, uh, what, uh, the future brings for this.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Joey did a great job putting this together once again, and then spearheading this. And I thank, uh, the input of all the people involved here, mostly through the first responder group, uh, fire, ambulance, um, and police, of course. Thank you.
Well, Mark, I did have a question. I raised my hand.
Just, just.
Sorry.
Get it out.
You got, uh, Joe, on that, uh, STAR contract, I noticed there's two retainer lines on it. One's a yearly line for 117,000, and then there's also a quarterly retainer. What's the difference between those two retainer charges?
Well, they're all the same thing. I mean, so the retainer is 96,000, and we pay them quarterly. So I, I mean, I, I've probably given you more detail, and you even need to see. That's just how we pay them, and how our contract's set up. That, the, um, uh, let me see here, uh, yeah. So the retainer's 96,000, as you said, um, this year, and the 20,075 is for the being on-call 24/7. That's, we just have to pay them out. So if you total the 116, you divide by four, it's 29,060. So every, once a quarter, every three months, we have to pay them 29,000. The retainer, we get billed for what we use, and we're ahead of it right now. So the retainer is just like an attorney. You, you just pay them in advance, but then they keep log the hours. And if you have extra hours, you, you roll them. If you have.
The line items behind on your spreadsheet, just the breakdown of the two numbers above.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I noticed, um, there's a couple other STAR line items in, uh, the licensing and hosting fee, uh, and also in the town. Those are all in addition to what we pay for the service contract, right?
Yeah, that's more like hardware and like odds and ends things. It's not part of like on-call service. I mean, they, they, they help with other stuff too, so.
And my last question is, what is ELA funding?
They're, they're, they're in the bottom, um, that last line, the 33,492. That, that's what they were paying before.
What is it?
East Line, uh, ambulance.
Thank you. Just needed to know what the acronym was. Thanks.
There's a lot of acronyms in this book. So, yeah, we can slow down and explain it out. Uh, anybody else have their hand up or like to speak? Paul, next I've just burnt it and belted it out. There's a lot of Brady's in the Brady Bunch tonight. Okay. Great, thank you. We're gonna go to the next budget. That is the emergency management budget, budget 214. 214. Sandy, you have me very organized tonight. I appreciate that. Everything is just flowing right in order.
This is good. Uh, all right, thank you. This, this one is a, uh, as always, is a fairly lean budget. Um, it has the stipend for my position. It has EOC staff, um, that we will bring in for either millstone events, uh, activations of the EOC, um, as well as Julie's full-time salary. Um, it also takes care of the radio maintenance, and that radio maintenance is inclusive of the fire departments, EMS, public works, schools. So everyone who touches our radio system and utilizes our radio system, that maintenance, uh, contract, which is with utility communications, uh, is, is encompassed there. Um, it takes care of the telephones for the dispatch center, um, fire marshal's office, and the EOC, uh, which is now gonna be obviously consolidated into a single building. Um, it has AED supplies, so basically the batteries for AEDs throughout the, the community are paid for out of there, um, and as well as some other miscellaneous supplies. Uh, so again, you know, we had looked for, um, and, you know, actually, I'll, I'll get to that later. But, um, we, we did actually look for the addition of the Everbridge system. I just want to point this out, that we will be going for the nuclear safety grant to get this. This is a, a system that allows us to communicate better with our residents, which we're trying to accomplish. Currently, the Everbridge system through the state of Connecticut is for emergencies only. So if it were to be a life-threatening emergency, then we can access into the Everbridge system and utilize that. However, there's a softer version, which allows people to opt into it to, uh, you know, but, again, much softer for things such as road closures, events, snow emergencies. So again, we're just looking for more effective ways to communicate with the public. Um, and, and again, in our submission this year for, for the, uh, the EPZ grant, which is for the Millstone area, we're looking for funding for that.
And it was in your budget?
It, it was, yes.
That's the reason why you're bringing it up, because.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up to, to show, you know, that, that we are looking for alternative funding for that. You will see it in the budget, um, but we're going for alternative funding.
Yes. So we, we took it out of the budget, hoping for this, but, and, and, and a wonderful thing, but we're just trying to keep the budget lean as usual, um, especially this year. Um, nothing would please me more than, than having that system. There's so much communication that we are doing now, you know, but, but Facebook isn't the answer. And the town website isn't the answer, and people do expect, uh, community, in this age of communication, there is a tool out there that we could utilize with reverse 911, we like to call it in the, in the civilian world. Uh, but Everbridge is what it is, and we would be able to alert people, and certain, certain people, right? Chief, we'd be able to pinpoint a neighborhood, not blast to the whole town. So we have a water main breakdown at Giant's Neck Beach, uh, Association neighborhood. We'd be able to let those people know that there's gonna be some issues, or issues with the water quality, et cetera.
Exactly. It's extremely user-friendly. You can draw, uh, you can draw shapes on a map. You can just do it by zip code. You can do it by anything you draw. Uh, so it can be very specific to two or three houses. Um, so it, it's definitely beneficial to have that tool.
So the Selectmen know, what's the price tag on that?
It was 11,000, um.
Yeah, that neighborhood.
Julie, do you have that amount? It was in the 11,000 range.
It was a five-figure, uh, so it was an addition that, um, I would love to have put into the budget. Hopefully, we can find some grant, uh, funding, some, um, uh, alternate, alternate means. Um, thank you for bringing that up, and it is something this town needs to invest in. No question about it.
It's an outstanding communication tool. Yeah, we use it at work and for both emergencies and for just general notices, so, works well.
Yeah. So if we happen to get another windfall from FEMA or something, it's the first thing I'm gonna reach out and, uh, do. But I think we've gotten a lot of money from FEMA. So, um, any questions on this budget? It's pretty straightforward, as you see. You see the revenue line down at the bottom. We do get money back, NSEF, uh, estimated funding. And that's what, nuclear safety?
It's a combination. So, so we receive, uh, the bulk of that from nuclear safety, uh, but also the state's emergency management grant, uh, does pay us a little under $10,000. Uh, while emergency management is, you know, about 40, in, in the 40s, 44,000-ish.
I, I think we, um, your, your, your specific salary, because you are chief, but also EMD, uh, you, um, you get a substantial part of your salary is paid for, not by the tax dollars, but, well, I guess everything's a tax dollar, but, but we get funding, and this is part of that?
Correct. That, that pays. Correct, that that pays, ultimately ends up paying for, you know, forty-five-ish percent of my salary.
It's important to remember that, folks, and I wanted to bring that up, and this is a good place to bring that up. Forty-five percent of the chief's salary is covered. Good information there. Are there any questions? Lot of budgets here, let's move on. We have dispatch next, two fifteen. Two fifteen dispatch, and as you know, chief is still, uh, well, it's still.
Long clock, it's like a draft. So you you'll notice with the dispatch, the, uh, the contractual raises are two and a quarter percent, which is consistent with their collective bargaining agreement. We have this conversation, it appears yearly, when it comes to the staffing of dispatch, so I'll just remind you kind of how it works. We currently have six full-time dispatchers, uh, we have a small cadre of part-time dispatchers. While we have some outstanding part-time dispatchers, it's very difficult from a scheduling standpoint, um, to be fully reliant upon on them. We need some schedule changes and some collective bargaining changes to alter their schedule, which reduced the known uh, amount of part-time shifts from ten to five per, uh, per week. And remembering this is seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We're staffing with two dispatchers on days and evenings and one on the midnight shift, which, you know, is not the best staffing to go into one, however, it's out of necessity at this point. But that being said, the part-time shifts are scheduled at five. Unfortunately, uh, the way of the world with part-time employees is the reliability and availability sometimes is lacking. You add on top of that any medical, um, issues with dispatchers that may be out long-term, which we've had a couple in the past two years. Vacations, other type of leave takes place, uh, you're struggling to find replacement for them. The part-time dispatchers, again, while they are a valuable commodity, um, they have full-time jobs, they have other issues to deal with, so their availability is not going to be tremendous. So we also often end up relying more on the full-timers to work in the overtime, uh, position. This is not, you know, again, it's a, it's a, uh, a gamble each and every year when we go into this budget to figure out what is the proper balance going to be and what is the availability? You know, currently, we have a, you know, one part-time dispatcher who is working a tremendous amount of hours, and most of that took place while we had a full-timer out on a medical leave. But that could easily go away and and kind of subside. So what you're seeing in the budget request for there, last year, we we made an attempt to bring down the overtime and increase the part-time line. Because of that availability, we're kind of flipping that switch this year, and we're asking for an increase in the overtime line, that increase is to really fund what we foresee and what we can project this year being for our overtime expenditures. Um, and then having a reduction in those part, uh, part-time hours, just because we simply are not getting the the part-time availability. Understand too, this is a position where we have to have somebody seated in the chair. This isn't, you know, an issue where management-wise, we can say, well, we're just not going to fill that shift, because ultimately that means there's not somebody answering nine-one-one, sending fire and EMS to those scenes, and, you know, sure, the fire chiefs will, you know, we're certainly, you know, echo that fact of that is something that is an absolute necessity for everybody here to to do their jobs properly and to keep our community safe. I will say that, you know, with this shift, um, we're still going to make the attempts to have part-timers fill, and if in fact, if if in fact, if in fact we do get part-timers, um, it it'll be, you know, to our benefit, and we'll be able to take from that overtime line and put into part-time, and certainly, the rate of pay is far less than a full-timer at overtime. So what you're getting is, you know, that increase, um, in the overtime line, which brings it up to ninety-five thousand, um, and a reduction in the part-time from fifty-six to thirty-four. Other than that, um, we're staying fairly status quo, with the one exception of the uniform line, which we are asking for an increase of a thousand dollars, and what that is, is to really, in the change of venue, the dispatchers are going to be who greets the public at the window. In the current position, you know, they don't deal with the public, so there's very little uniformity, uh, needs. And we're going to try to change that, where we have a more professional appearance, um, even though it may, is a soft appearance, they're not in full uniform. We're looking for, uh, you know, we're really providing them with clothing, which has emblems of the agency for which they work, because they will be representing us to the public, so that is why we're asking for that increase, uh, to start. That is, uh, again, not many lines in this budget, but certainly it is the staffing which which drives it.
Questions?
Mike, could I hear, you're talking about midnights, did I hear you say there's going to be two on midnights? Uh, once you move into.
No, there's one on midnights, so. So, so days, days and evenings are staffed with two, uh, seven days a week. And the midnight shift is a single dispatcher, seven days a week.
Okay, how's that working out?
Well, a- again, not the ideal, uh, certainly, we 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 would, um, you know, we firmly believe that the best option is to go with two around the clock. Uh, that would require, you know, us to staff it, you know, probably on the seven-day-a-week schedule, uh, two to three more full-timers. So, you know, certainly i- it's a cost consideration that we have to make. The police commission has discussed this several times in the past about, you know, ultimately having that be a goal, but we're also trying to balance, you know, the significant understaffing of the police department at the same time and trying to, you know, create a balance, and, you know, when I, when I came in, we had four full-timers. We've now increased to six, uh, we've changed the schedule, so we're trying to really get the best staffing possible, but you know, again, I and I, I don't want to speak for the fire chiefs, but I'm certain that they would echo, uh, you you know, the belief that having two on at all times is certainly the ideal situation we all want to be in.
Yeah, I I would very much like to explore that in the not-too-distant future to see two round the clock. Uh, mainly because, you know, granted, midnights are usually your quieter shift, but as we all know, tell me what night is going to be quiet, you don't really know.
And when it goes bad on midnights, it.
It really goes bad, yeah. Okay, thank you, Chief.
And and now that they are going to be the face of the public safety building, only having one person in the building, and someone walks in the door at one o'clock in the morning. Not that trouble usually walks into the police station, but they can, they can.
Yeah.
And and again, you know, we we've had that, we've had this discussion, um, you know, the last couple of budgets where we've talked about ideal staffing, and certainly, um, it is something I would wholly endorse to go to two around the clock.
Mike, I fully understand why you you moved the budget around, and it's a net increase of about twenty-three thousand dollars over last year, but based, you've, you've expended ninety-one percent of this year's overtime budget, even after transferring some in there, so you're definitely using more overtime than.
And and you know, what what happens with this, and again, I'll go back to this year, um, you know, you have a single dispatcher who is out with a long-term, you know, medical issue. That is five, you know, at least five shifts a week that you're replacing, and a lot of times, if you're doing that in overtime, that's going to get eaten up very quick, because I, you know, can't stress enough, these are positions, you have to have somebody in that chair at all times, and you know, we we need that, we need to staff it, and, you know, unfortunately, when someone's out, there's a cost involved.
And this is like having an insurance policy in case that happens again. Need the money there to pay for it.
Chief, if we were to, you you mentioned two, three more full, full-timers, would, if if, if were to happen, would, would that change overtime budget? Or you'd still anticipate this overtime budget to cover vacations and?
Well, you, you know, again, i- if you did that, um, you would you would in all intensive purposes reduce the known five per week. And then you would have a, uh, uh, replacement, so. So we'd have to try to figure what would that actually truly be, uh, we'd have to look at the time off and how to staff it. The other thing, you know, having a conversation with the dispatch about additional change in schedule, to try to better accommodate uh, two on at all times, you know, right now, we went from the Monday to Friday, everybody working kind of, you know, weekday with weekends off, and now rotating, so if we were to get more dispatchers and put them on full-time, do it all time, certainly can expect maybe some other, uh, hour options, whether it be longer shifts, um, or different days off, and there's certain, there's certain different options out there.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it would be interesting to see what hap- happens if it's, if you two to three, three, a hundred, a hundred eighty, thirty thousand, this happens, so over, over to you know, what would the bottom-line number be at some point?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, rough math, it's sixty thousand dollars roughly for the six that are here now. And adding three, three would be ninety thousand, we would only leave forty thousand for overtime. But it's going to cost you between half and two people additional salary probably net.
Are there any, any other comments? I'm having some connection issues, I get a lot.
I think it's, I think it's everyone echoing back through Mark Salerno's when he, uh, unmutes, not like it was coming back for his.
Salerno, get a real setup, you know, for an engineer. So is it, was it Salerno that was bouncing the sound? Yeah? Yeah, that's not working out, Marky. Mr. Salerno. Mr. Marky, so, all right, I I didn't know if it was my connection, because everyone was doing it, so I figured if everyone's having problems, it must be me. So, okay, let's, let's move on, then are there any other questions?
Can we just make a comment? You, you know, as this town expands and more developments and and changing, uh, as age, you know, gets older and and there's more elderly people in town, you're really going to at some point need, I think, around the clock, uh, two dispatchers. So I think it it's really important, I think that we're thinking about that for the future, finding a way to accommodate that. I think that's just the reality of what we're going to face.
I agree, because, you know, I hear from the the fire chiefs and so forth like that, that the volume of calls is definitely not decreasing, and especially on midnight shift too, and we do have, you know, the, you know, communities, a Happa, Chapman Fire, Chapman Woods, and so forth.
And just to, you know, not, not to, you know, be a negative person, but you throw out there also the unknown of if you have a single dispatcher in there, that dispatcher suffers a medical issue or some other, you know, problem. You're, with being alone, uh, you're really putting the town and everybody at risk in that situation.
There is discussion among area towns about reinvigorating the, uh, discussions around regional dispatch. Uh, down the line, you never know, it's one of those departments that it it is done in other parts of the country successfully, and it's even done in the state successfully with regional town, with regional systems among, um, a handful of towns, and it is something that, um, could come up again, you may hear about that. Anything else?
Uh, Mark, do we know yet, or have any idea yet, how much money we're going to get uh, for, um, implementing all of the new requirements for the certification of the police, which of course closely tied to emergency management.
You mean like state grants, it's, et cetera?
Right, because there was some talk, uh, at the Capitol about, uh, giving towns an extra allotment of money for implementing the new requirements, uh, with the, uh, you know, for.
Roseanne, nothing is coming our way, uh, and there's nothing in the governor's budget that indicates that either. There's been some discussion about it, but, um, and and really, it should be backed, otherwise it's an unfunded mandate that is just going to make the property tax issue in the state of Connecticut worse, be, and and because all this accreditation and certification and all the good things that we are doing to support the police and and have a better, um, better police force, um, all good things, uh, body cameras are not being supported by the state, although it is being mandated. Am I, am I off at all, Mike, on that, on Chief? Is that, am I, am I correct on that?
No, I mean, it, at this point, all of the, uh, forty-four items in the police accountability bill remain unfunded mandates, so uh, there has been, as far as I see, except for, um, the, the reimbursement for the body cameras. However, it's also being reimbursed at thirty percent rather than the fifty percent, which it had been in past, you know, grants, so even that is a reduction, uh, you know, while they're mandating it, so I I don't, I I would, I would love for money to be there, but I have not heard anything different, um, at any venue.
Okay, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. If you know anybody up in Hartford, Roseanne, put in a good word.
I'm going to remain silent.
Um, very good, Mike, we'll go to the, we'll go to the big cheese here, um, uh, the, the police budget, two sixteen is the budget item. Two sixteen, I know you're supported tonight by, uh, Dan Price, I think was here, he's the chair of, uh, of our police commission, and and he'll be able to answer some questions, I know Lieutenant Maisick is here.
If I, if I could speak just really quickly before the chief goes, as far as
Okay.
from the police commission's point of view. Um, as everybody knows, there are two additional officers in this year's budget, and I kind of wanted to explain how that's just not a random pick. Um, the police commission has sat down, and we have looked at staffing in our department versus staffing in other towns, and the amount of staffing that we need for our police officers to do the job correctly. So we've come up with a six-year plan for strategic staffing for the department. East Lime is the seventh highest state for growth, as far as for housing growth, but yet we are the fifth lowest per capita per police. In other words, we right now have one point two-three officers per thousand residents. The regional average is two point oh-seven, and the highest is two point eight-eight. Now, we don't need to do what everybody else does, I understand that, but what that points out is, there's a reason everybody is hired, because we need more officers to do our job correctly. To raise our, our current staff of twenty-four to the regional average would require thirty-nine officers. What the commission thought we would do is go to one point nine officers per thousand people, which would give us thirty-six officers, which would be two officers per year for the next six years. Now, keep in mind, six years from now, that will put us at about one point nine at our current population, not what our population will be in six years. Um, our current staffing levels allow for one sergeant, two officers per shift. Um, this is really a low staffing level, and it has significant impacts on our operational abilities. We currently have four officers who are eligible for retirement, we really need to plan ahead for that. So we we looked at all the numbers, and I know it's easy to keep things the way they've been. I mean, I I hear, I was on this board for a long time, I've been through this budget process, I understand how hard it is. You just want to cut everything that you possibly can to keep everything as low as possible. But we need to do the right thing, not the easy thing, and we need to seriously start looking at developing our staff of our police department, so they actually are are safer and are able to do their jobs. Policing has changed a lot in the last several years, especially in the last year, and and we need to address that. So the commission really endorses this plan to achieve one point nine officers per thousand residents, which would be about thirty-six officers over the next six years. It's not willy-nilly, it's not just randomly adding numbers, it's it's where we need to go to do the right thing for our police department. And then I'll let the chief take over from here.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, and, you know, I I think it's important to always remember that the level of staffing has a direct impact on the operational abilities of the department. And that staffing level of, you you just think about the size of the town, square mileage-wise, call volume-wise. You know, having two officers and one sergeant working the shift, um, that's very spread thin. So a domestic happens, a serious accident happens, multiple calls are happening, you end up having to triage more and spend less time dealing with the issues that are occurring in, you know, in the community. And many times, you know, we're able to navigate that safely and and ultimately get to the end result that we do, but the quality sometimes can lack, because the officers do not have the ability and time to, uh, for one, do follow-up investigations, uh, to be as thorough as possible, to spend the time, sometimes they need to get to the bottom of, uh, you know, in-depth situations to run traffic enforcement, so, you know, that list gets gets expanded. You'll also look to see calls for service, and we report this monthly at our police commission meetings, that continues to rise. We, you know, up to about eighteen thousand calls for servants this year, uh, compared to sixteen thousand the year before. So a significant impact on, you know, the calls for service, and those are what officers are being called to on a daily basis by our citizens. Whether it be, uh, something they proactively come across, or something that the individuals are calling for. But I will say, with low staffing levels, you certainly have less proactivity and much more reactivity, um, as far as policing. But looking at that chart, you can, you know, just see the the differences between agencies, the differences in the staffing. And I think you'll also see a corresponding, um, you know, note to what the services that agency is able to provide, and I. what the services that agency is able to provide. And I, you know, I will say over and over again, I think we do an outstanding job at, at definitely doing more with less. Um, however, um, the more that we are provided with and the ability to do more, I think the better product that your residents get. And I think we also need to point out not just the calls for service, but as, as Chairman Price said, pointing out that the town is seventh in the state in growth. And I think that is an enormous piece because as we continue to add to our town, uh, both residences, condominiums, businesses, traffic, um, we're expecting the police department to maintain that extremely low level, um, but still do the same job and, and actually do more of a job. And I think at some time, you know, at some point, we have to look at that and say, you know, where, what is the breaking point to which, um, you know, we are at a point of failure? And that's something that I truly do not want to get to. I think we have a lot of positive things in our community. I think our department does a lot of positive, uh, things. But I would always like to be able to do more. So I think, you know, from the staffing level, that is what the police commission has come across with and said, we need to have a staffing plan for the future. And in this budget, we've asked for two additional officers to help us, um, continue to move forward towards that goal.
Thank you. So you have a, a, you have a, a budget here that exists, uh, well, that, that's substantially more than just the two officers that are even the request. So why don't you run over some of the other highlights, uh, Chief?
A- absolutely. So running through the, uh, you know, the highlights of, of the budget lines, as you see them, the police officer line, uh, you have contractual raises plus the addition of two officers. The, the foot and parade line, the overtime line, the overtime boat line, all just having increased, um, contractual raises. I think we have been very successful over the past four years, especially in the area of the overtime of, of being close on the overtime to what we need. Now, certainly we've had some situations where we've had officers, um, on, on extended leave. Uh, currently we are down one officer, soon to be down two officers. So that has an overtime impact on the department. Um, but then corresponding the salary will have a little bit of extra money that we can, uh, transfer over to that. But I think we're, our projections are always, or have been very good on the overtime and that will continue. Uh, the training line, we have an increased request in that training line. That is for training salary. Um, and most of that is to accommodate, uh, part of the police accountability bill, the bias training that has, that is mandated. That is an additional amount of hours that officers then have to add to their mandatory trainings. There's a cost always involved because we have to either pay that officer's salary if they're off or if they are being replaced on duty, we have to pay the overtime for the officer replaced. Um, the facility, you have a significant reduction, obviously, moving to our new building. Uh, we have, we have, uh, budgeted for this year just to have the payment to Waterford through, uh, the end of August. So it's a very brief, uh, portion of funding because we are fairly confident that we will be in, uh, in occupying the new building before that. Uh, the boat storage and maintenance, we're asking for an increased cost of five hundred dollars. And, you know, while the percentage is high, monetarily, it's not much, but certainly shrink wrapping the boat has become more costly. Some of the, you know, we, we are maintaining two marine vessels. Certainly the, the, we are experiencing are becoming more and more for, of what we have to do for upkeep. Uniforms, uh, you have a, a, an increase for uniforms, which are a couple of different reasons. Um, number one, contractually, this year we have an in, the contractual clothing allowance, um, in dry a cleaning allowance, which is provided, that is a mandate by, by contract, um, as well as the amount that we are finding to out, to outfit new officers. Um, it's running between twenty-five hundred, uh, to three thousand dollars per officer to fully outfit them as we need to get them up to duty. Um, and just cautioning here, uh, this also comes into effect not just with the new officer that we're hiring as an addition. Um, if an officer were to retire or, or resign and we have to replace them, a new officer again has to be fully outfitted. And so there's a, a higher cost involved in that. Uh, training supplies, you'll see, um, a large increase in this. The reason for this is the addition of, you know, we're trying to bring our less lethal force capabilities, um, in, to better alignment with our needs. Uh, right now, we, we do not have, uh, enough tasers that are of, of new enough model that can be distributed to each officer. So we are attempting to both modernize.
Is that Mike that's freezing?
Yes.
Okay. It's Chief for losing you. Chief, we're losing you. Why don't you turn off your video? We find that that sometimes works. If you turn off video, just go audio only for a little bit. Your, um, data will catch up maybe.
You got me?
Yeah, we hear you now.
All right, good, fine. So I, I'll, I'll go back then on, on the, uh, the tasers.
Yeah, we're talking about tasers. That's where you left off.
So the tasers are less lethal, uh, to be able to outfit, um, all of our officers or as many officers as, as possible, um, to make sure we have that less lethal force out on the roads, um, which is certainly a safety issue for everybody involved, um, as well as the tuning sidearms for the two new officers because that has to be something that's accounted for. Um, a- as well as looking at, uh, additional, uh, training for taser, which is expendable, expendable cartridges, um, and some other items involved in that. Um, looking at prisoner expenses, this is a new expense. Uh, we're ballparking about five thousand dollars, which is consistent with other agencies. This is simply, um, you know, really right now is an estimate because we're looking at disposable blankets for, you know, anybody that we may be housing until they go to court or, or until they're released. Uh, meals that we have to provide them and we will be contracting with one of the, you know, one of the establishments in town to, to see what, what kind of cost we can get for, you know, a very basic meal that we have to provide. But certainly we need the funding to, to pay for that. Um, the additional thing is the testing accreditation. This is a line, part of the Police Accountability Act. I've had many, many facets of it that I think we have discussed, um, in, in prior meetings. But to talk about what we actually have to provide under the police accountability bill. Um, and this is required psychological testing, which we have worked closely with the East Lime Psychological Associates to come up with the, how much that's going to cost us. We basically need to do a quarter of our department each year, uh, send them for psychological review as well as drug testing. And also the ACLEA accreditation, which the initial expense would be paid out of this line. So ultimately, we're looking for this new line to be added, uh, based for things that are required that did not exist prior to this fiscal year. Everything else, um, is barely status quo to what we've had in the past, but certainly any questions or comments, uh, I would be more than happy to, to answer.
There's a lot here. So questions from the Board of Selectmen?
I don't have a question, but I, I'll, I'll state that the numbers show the facts and, uh, the addition of police officers. Two is more, it's probably less than what we need, but it's a step in the right direction. So I wholly endorse uh, the need to increase the budget to support that.
Thank you for that comment. Yeah, I think the, the police commission was reasonable in their approach, uh, that they, they can't get there today or next year's budget, but, uh, but showing just like a capital plan. Here's our six-year capital plan. It's the personnel plan for six years. This is where we need to be and this is how we're gonna get there. I thought that was a good approach. They use national numbers. They use regional numbers. Um, they, I think, uh, Dan and his, uh, commission were very persuasive and here's the need and here are the facts and how are we gonna get there? So I, I applaud the police commission. As you know, I'm an ex-officio and former commissioner. Um, I think they did a great job of explaining that need. I think we needed to hear that and see that. And there's much, much more than they could get into, but, you know, um, I think they, they wanted to present, fine tune the, the, the information so you can really focus on where our numbers are compared to everywhere else. And, you know, being the fourth or fifth, uh, smallest force per capita in the state of Connecticut um, is not indicative of how we, uh, respect public safety and, um, value public safety in our town. So, um, we need to step it up a little bit.
We actually have fifteen slides for you guys. I cut it down to one.
I did show, I don't know if, yeah, you saw that, Dan. I did, uh, I did go to a share screen. I wasn't sure if that, I, I figured out that, that you want me to do that.
Thank you.
You weren't doing that. So I, I found your email. Good, I'm glad we were able to get that out there. Um, other questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Just one comment too, uh, with the, uh, police accountability bill. I like the fact that there's training money in there now because we know with the CLIA certification, that doesn't happen in a four or five month period. That's several years. And on top of that, the chief emphasized this several times with the tasers. You know, less lethal means to remedy a situation. It just shows, I think, the forward-thinking philosophy that permeates not only the commission, the town, but the, uh, police department as well. So I think they may need to be commended for that.
I, uh, I also would echo, uh, that. I, I'm really happy to see the, the increased training. Um, the emphasis on less lethal force, uh, in a situation. Uh, these are all, uh, values that I think, uh, many people have expressed particularly in the last year. And, and we are moving in, in a good direction in that regard. And, um, you know, when the police are out there doing what they do, they have to feel safe and you can't have them understaffed. And if we're gonna, uh, accommodate all the concerns that the public has, um, we have to make sure that the police have adequate staffing. So, um, they don't have to be worried when they're out there, that they have people to, to support them and, uh, when things go awry. So, um, I like what I see in the budget. So I think it's a great job.
Good comments, Dan. I'll echo that by just saying it is our primary responsibility as the Board of Selectmen to be watching out for the welfare of our town. And that would include our basic responsibilities, which is public safety. The numbers show that we're putting our officers in danger and the public could be in danger should a, a large, um, situation occur and we simply don't have manpower that would be, uh, that would meet minimum standards. Um, and, and we need, we have an obligation to get this town there. Any other comments on this budget? Any questions on this budget?
I'll just, just, uh, is, is my audio okay right now?
It's better.
Okay. Um, uh, just, I concur with what everyone said. We saw this coming. We got testimony last year about the increasing staff. I know we increased last year. I was happy to see that. And, uh, I think, um, I, I, I understand our goal. We're moving toward that goal. Um, and, uh, that's all I'll say. So I'm happy with this budget.
Terrific. Yeah, it's, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a big increase, folks. We don't, you know, we, we, we start the budget season and, and tell, ask all our department heads to, you know, keep it to one or two percent and, and, and we're, we're, this is a budget that we've been woefully short on for far too long and was a result of, you know, uh, the resident trooper system, et cetera. But we're, we're gaining speed, we're gaining momentum and we're gaining progress on this. And I think we need to, uh, support this. That's why it stayed in my budget.
Just, and, and one more thing. I know it's not in this budget, but from conversations with Anna, uh, regarding one of your previous meetings, uh, the legal line for the, uh, CLIA accreditation. I just wanna make sure that we, we have an understanding. What we put in for, uh, this line for accreditation and testing is the initial fee we have to pay for CLIA. Now, CLIA is a national accreditation that this accountability bill requires. In the, in the legal line, you also saw a request for expenditure for attorney's fees to assist with that policy, um, change in the policy updates and, and reviews that are going to be required for CLIA. In checking with a law firm, and this is the Dago Law Firm, which is being utilized by the vast majority of, of especially southeastern Connecticut police departments, um, they charge on an hourly basis. So their estimate for the entire accreditation and policy review, uh, was that approx. It's at twenty-five thousand dollars. However, however, they did not have the ability to say it's gonna be expended all in one year or or second year. So I think this bet would be to kind of divide that up. I'm thinking it's gonna be about a two-year process for their review. Um, and they're gonna be billing on an hourly basis. So, um, you know, again, however you wanna divide that up, but I know according to Anna, that was a conversation from the last budget meeting.
We got about ninety-seven percent of that. Um, we just lost you for hair.
I'm glad I switched to Comcast.
I'm having good luck with them.
I, I, times it is.
Yeah. It looks like your wife has down in the dungeon right now, though. It doesn't look like you're...
A- a- as you can tell, our new office that we set up, yes.
Get down there. Um, well, you have one more budget. So, um, you know, we didn't think this through. Maybe we should have put a satellite dish in your front yard or something. But Animal Control two twenty-six is, um, and I, listen, is there any other questions on the police? I wasn't, I wasn't getting blown over with questions here. So, uh, we can always go back. But let's go to two twenty-six, which is the Animal Control. That is a, that is a, uh, pretty simple budget.
Yeah. A- a- and as always, um, actually more so than always, uh, this is simply an increase in the, the salary contractual lines. The salary, uh, the overtime and the part-time assistant. I will say that the addition of our part-time assistant ACO this past year has been phenomenal. Um, she has done a tremendous job. Our animal control division and department has been working flawlessly. And you see no other budgetary needs outside of the salary, uh, contractual salary increases, uh, to this line. So.
We've done real good. Uh, Lieutenant Maisick, uh, you, you had this dumped in your lap when I, when I showed up to town and, uh, and, and, uh, you, you've made it come a long way and, uh, under both Mike's leaderships, um, it's, it's, listen, it's not the problem that it used to be. Let's put it that way. And, you know, we took over the ACO duties and then now we built Waterford back, back, back a little while ago. It was the opposite. But, um, uh, we, we, we save money. We get a good value for our money. As you see, the revenue is there. We get about half of it back. Um, um, there's a slight difference. It, it depends on what town calls in the overtime, I believe. Um, so sometimes it can be, it can, the, the scale can tip a little bit toward one town or another, but we get roughly fifty percent of it back. And that's, um, that's a cheap price to, to pay for any town for ACO. Again, remember that's a twenty-four hour, seven day a week, three hundred sixty-five day a year, uh, obligation the town has. Uh, and we meet that obligation and we do so very well. Did the New London, um, facility get built? We didn't have much fanfare over that, the, uh, the new shelter.
Mike, you're better.
We're having some issues with it.
Okay.
So.
All right. So I, I guess we'll, I'd love to hear some details offline at some point and, uh, and it's a Waterford responsibility and they're working with New London, but we'll, um, I'll, I'll hear those details. Thank you. Any other questions on this? I'll just tell you that, uh, you, you should be proud of, uh, the job that our ACO and our assistant ACO does. Um, we are, um, meeting those needs and we do it humanely and we do it, um, caringly, uh, for our, our animals that they have to go out and, uh, and service. Great. So, um, I, I think we're done with, um, the, uh, the police portion of the Mike Finkelstein Show here. Um, now that you got, it seems like you've got your data back, but we don't need you anymore, Mike. But, uh, are there any questions for any of the budgets that, um, uh, Chief went over? Okay, great. Great. Then we can move on. The Niantic Fire Department is next, very next budget, two seventeen is the number. Niantic Fire Department's chief is here tonight. As you know, uh, the chief is a volunteer chief. He does all this work, does all this, all this dedication to the town and is not a town employee, but instead is, um, a volunteer chosen by his peers. And he's also assisted today with, uh, with the presence of Mike Niebelon, I think, his deputy chief. So let me just flip this around. There we go. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to you folks, Mike and, um, and, um, uh, Chief Barone. Or just kind of cover the highlights. I know this is your first budget. Uh, Jim, do you have anything or is it Mike that's gonna speak?
Well, what do you, do you have questions on something?
Okay, let's just go over it then. Um, it- It's pretty cut and dry. We go from one year to the next with very little bump in it. I guess you don't have much highlight here. Let me ask the Board of Selectmen, are there any questions? It's one of those years that we were able to really maintain the costs, which is appreciated.
Mark, on the second page, 612, there was a reduction to coordinate with current year activity with GWI applied. What, what's the, can you give us a background on that?
On 612, the part-time firefighters?
Yeah.
Yeah, we reduced the ask to better reflect where they are now in their budget and in the history of their budgets. Anna and I did some calculations, and we feel like that's the right number. Chief and deputy could respond to that differently?
Mike took the hours and calculated them out and came up. I think there was an error the previous year, so that's why it came out so high originally. But that's what you think it should be, and when we run out, we just come back. That's all.
Yeah, we have a separate calculation sheet that we came to that number after plugging in the appropriate number of hours that the part-timer's work. And it might have been a miscalculation last year, so trying to factor in the correct numbers, that's what raised it to 208. But I understand the deduction there for that.
Yeah, it's a substantial increase from the 2020 actual expenses. So we definitely opened up the books and started looking. Anna, do you have their year-to-date, where they are now as a percentage?
I will note that, real quick, on the 2020, that was before we had the additional 18 hours for weekend coverage. We now staff 24/7 all week long. So that added two part-timer shifts on the weekends from midnight to 8:00 a.m., and it also extended our Friday evening and Saturday evening shifts. So that, the 21 budget was more, and that's where that one was. So actual expense of 20 isn't exactly related to what we're asking for now.
Is that a contractual obligation to add those shifts? Or was that just a decision made by the volunteer group?
My understanding, it was an agreement between Chief Dwyer, Chief Ricks, and yourself, because we were holding to the 24/7, 365 coverage that you had talked about when we had added the full-time position during the week for overnight hours.
Okay. Anna, did you have that?
Some of the issue with the wages for the part-timers is, in the calculation, they, it includes like all the vacation, and it makes, uses all the sick time and everything that the firefighters earn over the course of a year. However, they don't always take all of those days. So I think that's where the primary difference in how it's calculated and what the actuals are.
Okay, all right. Do you happen to have the year-to-date in front of you?
Yeah, so at the end of January, they're at 56% expended.
So their current budget is 187, 937, and they're at 50-something percent of that. So they're still, they're on budget or under budget for the current calculation. So, and that's a good explanation, Mike. Your numbers were strong, and you put it all in there, but there is, there are those other obligations, the obligation of sick days and vacation days, et cetera, aren't always cashed in. They can be banked, and therefore that becomes a different liability later on.
Correct. We just tried to budget, you know, we'd rather have a little extra than have to come back just for covering, because it's unpredictable when someone would take their vacation or sick.
That makes sense, and I can understand the difference between the two. Anna's explanation, it makes perfect sense. And, believe me, I looked at your numbers over and over and over again, and there's not a flaw in it other than...
We knew there was going to be a deduction anyway, just, but, you know, taking the actual numbers, that's where we came to that.
We don't want to deduct when we don't have to. We also don't try to put padding in unnecessarily. So as Chief pointed out, listen, if you run short, and there's a reason for it, there's a managerial reason for it, then we go back and we try to put that money back into your account. We don't always have that money. Our contingency runs lower and lower every year, but we will do our best. So based on the numbers, based on your department and how well you're running your department now, these numbers should cover you. It's down the history. Other questions?
Yeah, we're already at like 60% of the year.
Yeah.
That seems consistent with a new number.
That's correct. Terrific. No other questions? Pretty straightforward. The narratives have gotten better and better every year with our departments. We try hard so that you come in to this budget discussion, all these budget discussions, fully engaged, fully knowledgeable of how the budget came to be. So that helps. Chief, deputy, anything to add? Hearing, seeing none?
I've got nothing.
We're good to go. Thank you, folks. We'll go to Flanders Fire Department. That's 218, way next door. Great. So Chief, Chris Taylor is here. No stranger. Hi, Chris. How are you?
Guys, how are you?
Good. Chris, like Chief Barone and like Mike Niebelong, is volunteer, selected by his peers, doesn't get paid for the chief duties, and puts a lot of time and dedication into the job. We thank you. We thank the three of you that are present here tonight, and there's so many more that we thank for your commitment to the town. This is the Flanders Fire Department. Chris, you've been through this before, through other budgets. Do you want to just run through any highlights that we should be focused in on?
Really, there's just two big highlights. You're going to have the overtime for the full-timers. I know we took, I think it was last year, it was cut down, so I'm talking with past Chief Dorix. He's got a formula worked out. If you look in the description of overtime, it explains how our overtime budget was made up. Currently, I don't know. Each full-time fireman gets 260 hours of scheduled overtime. We had a lot of 108 hours for holiday. 100 hours for unscheduled time, could be storms, could be celebrating time, could be any event that's needed to hold the guys over. And then the average, I want to say it's about 20 hours a year of held overtime for a call comes in, five minutes before the end of the shift. That's how we base upon our overtime budget. Currently, right now, we've spent a lot of our overtime budget because firefighter waiter retired. But prior to that, he was out sick for a while. He only worked about a month and a half. And he's been retired since October 1st. Our new hire is over in Afghanistan. He's just recently come back, and then he got reactivated again during the presidential election. So I think he should be starting within a couple of weeks. His duty should be over. The second item that's a highlight is the telephones. We currently purchase the telephones for the Flanders Fire Department, but it's same for the Eastline Public Safety Building. That can detach, the networking. They now have, we have a cost now for maintenance, it's $83 per month for maintenance on. And the rest of it's all a zero increase.
Before I ask for questions, I want to point out that line down at the bottom in the 300s, 301 fuels. And I'm glad Chief Barone stuck around on this. Both departments do not have a fuel expense. Think about that. Think of all the equipment. And it's because of the generous donation of the Eastline Ambulance Association. It's a request that the town makes about this time every year. I just sent the request over formally. If you don't have it, it's in your inbox. I believe it was emailed yesterday. And it's, I think it's a $10,000 request per department, but it's whatever it costs. And it's for all fuels, diesel, gas, propane for the building, et cetera. So we're fortunate that we work in great partnership with the Eastline Ambulance Association. And I wanted to point that out, because in years past, there'd been money there that we would take off later. It was, and I just zeroed it out for simplicity, but I wanted to bring that up, because that needs to be put on record, and that needs to be acknowledged, that that fuel line, fuel isn't free. And it's paid for and voted on, and it's not a guarantee either. And, you know, this is a request that we make, and they have to vote on it. And we're hopeful that this generous donation continues to help the ambulance association. That said, are there any questions on the Flanders budget? Substantial increase on overtime. It was up there, actual expenses, 123 a year ago. We had brought that down this year, but we are running pretty heavy on it, aren't we? I think we're running over.
Yeah, we could transfer some money around with the part-timers, Liz.
So we bumped up the part-timers and tried to bring down the overtime, and that didn't work out because of contractual obligations, our obligations to our full-timers that get to fill shifts first, et cetera, et cetera. And we have nighttime coverage that is playing into this a little bit. The overnight guys, if they call out, it's our full-timers that fill those shifts, whereas...
We're also offering, two of the full-timers that the town or Eastline are paid for by the ambulance association. Also, a lot of the, we're talking about IT earlier. A lot of the IT over the last 15 years was paid for by the ambulance association and not paid for by the town or the police department, the whole setup for the dispatch regiment. So it's a lot of money over the years that they've kicked into.
Thank you. I didn't mean to suggest that that's the limitation of their contribution. By far, it isn't. Yes, and thank you for bringing it up. Keep in mind, we still have overnight firefighters being paid for by the ambulance association as a reimbursement, and you see that under revenue, I believe. And also IT, significant IT for the fire departments are paid for by ambulance as appropriate.
Real quick question for Anna. The same criteria you did for Niantic for the part-time, do you feel the same thing? That meets what you think we're going to need for Flanders?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm hopeful that overtime line, I know you're running heavy this year. I really wanted to cut it down some. And I'm not sure, you know, this is obviously the final budget. Still have to go through Board of Finance, and this board would have to vote on it as well. But I think there's still some room there, Chris, and tell me that I'm wrong, that when the fellow comes back from Afghanistan, oh, he's back. But when he comes back to full duty, and we have a younger, we have some younger guys in there now, and I'm hoping that the overtime line knocks down a little bit. Your part-time, we kept the same, and you got into trouble, not trouble this year, but we got into some heavy expenses with overtime. But that was because of some of that transition and that turnover. And of course, then the fellow being called away for active duty. And that's just the obligation we have.
Yeah, you've got close to 1,000 hours of contractual overtime.
Yeah.
You've got to make that, as I said, as best you can, work with the guys.
Okay. So, yeah, we can, I mean, if we can kind of go over that a little bit and kind of look for some details on that as well. I mean, the overtime in the other department is also 109, so, you know, it's up there. But this is heavy. So, anyway, that would be my only comment on this. We didn't really do any cutting, I think, on this budget.
Most of our budget's been a zero increase.
Yeah.
And I want to say it was 10 years ago, they cut all capital items out of, you know, we used to get, I think it was $10,000 a year, that the ambulance was overpaying. So we really slimmed our budgets down both firehouses over the years.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, observations? If not, we'll go, thank you, everyone. Thank you, fire departments, and thank you, Chris. We go to the Fire Marshal's Office, Budget 224. He's becoming a regular here on Selectman Night. Hi, John.
Good evening.
Let me get to that. That's Budget 224. Yeah, I do have it. John, this is, did you do this last year, John?
Just at the beginning, I've actually, Chief Finkelstein helped me with it.
Right, right. So you've been around a little bit, so you can see that we are looking for the high-level explanation. But you don't have much to explain. It's your salary, the Fire Marshal's part-time salaries, and that's contractual obligations there. We didn't have your budget. When we see that 4.55, we remember that a meeting or two ago, we had to increase John's line to make up a shortfall in his budget. We just didn't plan for his contractual raise, if you will. Not contractual, but his unaffiliated raise. And of course, next year's raise is built into that, too. So that's really two years of raises. He's not getting a 4.55 increase. Other than that, the only big-ticket item that's going up, and it's a small number, is your miscellaneous supplies going from, you know, $2,300 up to $31. Other than that, there's not much there, John. Do you have anything to throw in, just to let us know what's going on in your department?
Well, just with the miscellaneous supplies, that's based on us moving into the new building and become a completely separate department. Right now, obviously, we were currently sharing a lot of supplies with emergency management. That's going to change. So with copiers, paper, paper clips, anything when it comes to that. Trying to come up with a budget, you know, the first time doing it being separate that way. So we're trying to come up with our best guess.
Understandable, and it's a small amount anyway. Great. How's everything going over there? Okay?
Very well. You know, as talked about earlier, the town is growing with all the construction going on and the housing. It's not only on the new basis, but also a lot of the properties that are being constructed are going to require annual inspections by the office. So that's why with the part-time deputies, I'm keeping that account where it is. And the inspections are only going to go up as we grow as a town.
Good point, good point. Thank you. Any questions?
Hey, Mark, why didn't we move transportation allowance out of this budget over to 214? I assume this is on the road a lot, so...
Yeah, is it because he's...
That actually pays for Julie's position. So to go to different emergency management meetings, it was when they were combined, it was to pay for that position to go to different meetings that were required. So we moved it into emergency management.
Okay. What about John's transportation allowance?
He has a town vehicle.
He has a town vehicle, so we don't...
He has a town vehicle. That's right. Thank you.
You got it.
That's an easy answer.
Thank you.
That's what happens. We've zeroed a lot of those throughout the budgets. Any other questions? These town budgets are pretty, especially when you get down to these type of budgets. It's salary, it's salary and paper clips. So, thank you, thank you, John, for all you do. I don't hear any questions, so what we can do is take a little break. We actually have a big break. We really can't start a meeting before 7:30.
Low battery, low battery, low battery.
Low battery, low battery, low battery.
Mark, did I, am I looking at the right agenda? It says it starts immediately after the meeting commences, the regular meeting?
That's how it's worded.
Oh, it doesn't say 7:30, does it?
No. I mean, down below at the, you know, the Zoom thing, but the meeting is...
Yeah, I agree with you. So we'll, if there's no opposition to this, we'll, we'll start our Board of Selectmen meeting. Is that everyone's feeling? We'll, we'll call this the, the special meeting, we'll look for an adjournment.
So moved. Second?
It's motion by Mr. Salerno and Dan Cunningham, second. Mr. Siri tried to get in there, but he's still muted.
Yeah, nice, but Salerno picked up on it, that's why he's the second deputy to pick up on this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained?